And we are going to move on to our next item, which is item number 16. It's got to do with a map.
Item number 16 is adoption of resolution approving tentative parcel map, development plan, conditional use permit, and regular coastal permit to allow the demolition of an existing single-family residence and enable the construction of a three-story, three-unit residential condominium complex located at 508 North Tremont Street, North Tremont Street Condominiums, applicant Timothy P. Kelly. If we could open the public hearing, that would be great. Deputy Mayor Lowry, open the public hearing.
Yeah, open the public hearing, disclosure.
I have, I forgot to ask staff my question, but I have been by the site.
Staff only.
No contact.
Staff only and I've been by the site.
All material has been provided to the council.
Thank you. Welcome, Scott.
All right. Good evening, deputy mayor, council members, members of the public. I'm Scott Nightingale, senior planner from the planning division, here to present agenda item number 16 for the adoption of a resolution approving the development plan for a three-unit condominium complex located at 508 North Tremont Street. The applicant's representative from EOS Architecture is present, and they'll make themselves known. The project is comprised of a tentative parcel map, development plan, and a conditional use permit, and regular coastal permit. This entitlement proposal that we have in front of us today is exactly the same as the proposal that was approved back in April 22nd to 2015, with the exception of the reduction of the rooftop access stairwell to meet the current code. So this project here is, would propose a demolition of a 424 existing single-family home to enable the construction of a three-story, three-unit residential condominium on .118 acres. The residential unit sizes would range in square footage from 2,100 to about 2,400, and they would consist of three to two bedrooms with 2.5 baths. They would have access off the rear alley, which would have a private gated access for a two-car garage through a motor court type design. Access to the units would also occur from the internal stairwell within the homes and the garage, and a shared front access lobby area with an elevator. The project site is located one block north of the intersection of North Tremont Street and Sport Fisher. It is zoned within Sub District 9 of the downtown district, which allows single-family, multifamily, and row homes, as well as mixed-use developments. The project is noted in the red box. And it's surrounded by other single-family type developments, pretty much in all directions, with the exception of commercial developments located directly to the east. Here's some images of the elevation. This three-unit condo complex would provide a three-story contemporary architectural design that would provide vehicular access off the rear alley and pedestrian off the front. The second level would provide a majority of the habitable bedrooms, and the third level would provide the living room and kitchen areas. Staff has worked with the applicant to provide additional articulations and breaks in the facade to break up the building's massing. And here's a rendering of what it would look like off of Tremont. The architecture and landscaping would work in harmony with one another and complement the development in terms of bulk, scale, and type with the project itself and as well as the neighborhood. And here's another image of it. When analyzing the project, staff reviewed the project based on the following, the general plan findings, general plan land use compliance. It achieves a balance of residential land uses, provides additional housing stock, which is needed for the city, provides a good transition between the high-density residential and single-family. And the proposed residential use and number of units is compatible and appropriate for this area and location. And it complies with the downtown zoning ordinance in terms of development standards, bulk, scale, and type. And lastly, it complies with the local coastal program. There'll be no public coastal access impacts, as well as coastal view impacts, nor will there be any public parking impacts. This project did go to the downtown advisory back in October 25th, 2017, where it was approved six to zero with committee members Franklin and O'Doherty absent for recommendation to this board. So with that, staff recommends that the community and development commission confirm the CEQA exemption and adopt project resolution to approve the tentative parcel map, development plan, conditional use permit, and regular coastal permit. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
At this time, the testimony can be provided by the applicant if they choose to do so.
The public?
All right, so, does the applicant want to?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Bolen with EOS Architecture, and I am just here to answer any questions you might have. So Scott covered the project well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to the public. Is there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? If so, you can address the council at this time. Deputy Mayor, I see none.
Thank you.
You can close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Councilmember Kern.
Move approval.
Please vote.
Motion approved, four to zero.
Thank you. Item number 17.
Yes, item number 17 is adoption of resolution approving tentative parcel map, development plan, and regular coastal permit for the development of a three-unit residential townhome condominium complex located at 812 North Cleveland Street, North Cleveland Street Condominiums, applicant Chris Barrett.
Welcome back, Scott.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we need disclosures on this item?
Disclosures.
I've just been to the site.
Staff.
No contact.
Staff only.
All material has been provided to the council, and if we could officially open the meeting, that would be great.
Okay.
All right. Good evening. Scott Nightingale from the planning division, here to present agenda item 17 for the adoption of a resolution approving a tentative parcel map, development plan, and coastal permit for a three-unit residential townhome located at 812 North Cleveland Street. This is a rendering that you would see from North Cleveland Street, looking east. The project, like I said in the intro, is to create three-story over-basement, three-unit townhome condominium development with associated common areas on an existing vacant 5,000-square-foot parcel. The townhome development would be 9,762 square feet in total. Each unit would include three bedrooms, three baths, and a two-car tandem garage. Units would range in size from 2,200 to about 2,600. They would also have their own private open balcony space, as well as an oversized two-car tandem garage. Like I said in the intro here, the project's located at 812 North Tremont, or Cleveland Street, directly in the center of the block, on the east side of the street, surrounded by single-family and residential development in all directions. You have a condominium complex located directly to the west. You have row homes to the north, and directly to south, you have some single-family homes, and as well as the row homes to the east. Here's an image of the existing site. It's currently vacant. Based on building records, it shows that there was a single-family home that was demolished back in the 1970s, but it's been vacant ever since. And this is looking from the alley. The proposed building footprint and layout would meet the development standards and setbacks, as well as height and bulk and scale. Here's some images of the rendering. The proposed building elevations would be designed in a mixture of contemporary Spanish architecture elements that exist, that you would see throughout the neighborhood. The architectural elements consist of a mix of stucco wall, coverings, terracotta roof tiles, iron balcony, guardrails, arch window designs, as well as a mansard roof design and accent trellis. The proposed contemporary Spanish elements and three-unit condo complex would complement and be compatible with the neighborhood while providing attractive streetscape. There is no rooftop deck on this project, which we typically see. They worked with staffed on providing some additional higher architecture elements to enhance the project. The proposed drought-tolerant landscaping palette has been thoughtfully designed to provide an attractive streetscape while enhancing the neighborhood. They do provide some canopy trees and a lot of ground cover towards the front elevation, which would complement not only the project, but the neighborhood. When reviewing this project, staff reviewed the project based on the following for general plan compliance. It achieves a balance of residential land uses, provides a good transition between the existing high-density residential and single-family developments within the area. The proposed residential use is compatible and appropriate for this location in terms of density. It meets all development standards in terms of the zoning ordinance, as well as the local coastal program. There's no public coastal access, no coastal view access, nor will there be public parking impacts. Like the other project, this project did go to the downtown advisory back in October 25th, and it too was approved six oh with Franklin and O'Doherty absent for recommendation to the community development commission. So with that, staff recommends the community development commission confirm the CEQA exemption and approve the project resolution for tentative parcel map, development plan, and regular coastal permit for project approval. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer your questions.
At this time, the applicant has the opportunity to provide testimony if they wish to do so.
Deputy Mayor, council members, thank you for considering the project. I'm here to answer any questions as you proceed, but at the moment, I'll just, I'll wait to fill those if you have them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to the public. Alexa Harmon.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I live at 809 North Tremont Street. You actually saw a picture of my home. I stare out at that lot. This project will decimate the ocean view and harbor view for everything on Tremont Street East. That includes the hotels. That includes businesses. I've written a letter that goes over all of this. This is a 35-foot, four-story building. Everything else around it is two stories. Okay? This is not cool. I don't understand why this city keeps approving projects that aren't beneficial to the city. You could build three condos here that are worth about a half a million each. You could build two row homes that are built. At 35 feet, you're going to get at least 1.2 to 1.5 million. I don't get it. It doesn't add up. Okay? I've lived here for 20 years. I've seen you guys make some really dumb decisions. I've also seen you make brilliant decisions. Stop selling us short.
This is a public hearing item. Any other members of the public who wish to speak on this specific item have the opportunity to do so at this time. Deputy Mayor Lowry, I see none. You can close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Councilmember Feller.
Scott, the parking, that's underground. I thought I saw you say basement there, so, but I saw three garage doors on the back. So how does that work? I couldn't picture that.
Councilmember Feller, the parking's on the first level. Actually, there's a basement level that is comprised of Unit A, and then above that is the actual garage that comes off the alley. And that's a tandem configuration for each of the three units. So there's three separate tandem garages.
Okay.
And they come off the ground level, not in basement.
All right, very good. I move approval.
Councilmember Kern.
Yeah, I'll second. I have the same question as Councilmember Feller. Can you pull up the schematics and show me how the basement fits in? You know, I'm just a little, you know, seeing the drawings and stuff, I'm trying to figure out, and you'd say what's in the basement?
The basement is comprised of Unit A. So here, this is the basement level that we're looking at. This white space is just basically soil. So that's Unit A here in the yellow. And this is the first level. So access to the first level is off the alley. And this is Unit A. So to access the lower basement level, you can either walk down the steps here and go to the open air area underneath this ground level, or you can go into the internal stairwell through Unit A and go down to the basement level as well, which, I'll go back here so you can see.
And how many square feet is Unit A? Because it's one, two, three, so you know?
About 2,200 square feet.
Okay. It's three and a half. Okay, all right, I just try to get oriented here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Well, we just heard testimony that this proposal is not consistent with the surrounding community. And, you know, I am concerned that we're moving in that direction, trying to establish a new standard. And the thing about doing that is that it never ends. You know, there's always going to be a desire to do more and more, and there is definitely character in this community. There is definitely a sense of community. And I have some concerns that, based on the testimony, that it is not consistent, that it's going to basically not allow for views. And that is what people pay for. And that is, you know, whether we like it or not, that is the basis for a lot of the property values that we have, very close to the ocean. So my concern here is that it's not consistent with the surrounding community. Thank you.
Okay, please vote.
And if I could just say one more thing, I do think that we need to stop having tandem, allowing for tandem, especially since a lot of these units turn out to be vacation rentals, and that tandem just really does not allow for sufficient parking. Thank you.
Hold on a second.
There was a second. Motion and a second.
Yeah, I second it.
Yeah, Councilmember Feller, motion.
Please vote.
Turn second. Motion approved, three to one. Sanchez, no.
Okay. Item number?
Good job, Scott.
Twenty-one? Oh. Where is that? Twenty-two? Fifteen. Item number fifteen.
Yes, item number fifteen. Presentation by the city attorney on the procedures to fill the vacancy in the office of an elected mayor, potential appointment to fill the remaining term of the vacancy on either January 10th, January 24th, or February 7th, 2018, or direction to staff to prepare the necessary resolutions to fill the vacancy through an election at the next established election date.
Well, that pretty much covered the presentation, but I'll reiterate a couple points here. Honorable Deputy Mayor and members of the council, as you're aware, the vacancy in the office of the mayor was created officially on January 1st of this year, which was the effective date of Mayor Woods' resignation. The process for replacing the mayor is set forth in the California Government Code, specifically section 34902. I'll just read the relevant section of that code, what says, quote, "In the case of a vacancy in the office of the mayor for any reason, the council shall fill the vacancy by appointment. If the council fails to fill it within 60 days, it shall call an election to fill the vacancy to be held on the next established election date, to be held not less than 114 days thereafter. A person appointed or elected to fill a vacancy shall hold office for the unexpired term of the former incumbent." So your options are pretty clear. You have the option to make the appointment, and the person appointed would serve the remaining term. That's until December of 2020. Alternatively, you could direct us to prepare the resolutions to call the election. If the council calls the election, the election shall be on the next established election date, to be held not less than 114 days thereafter. But if you want this election to be in the June 5th ballot, then you can't use the full 60 days. Under the current council schedule, you'd have to adopt the necessary resolutions by February 7th. That's using our current council calendar. If you choose to use all 60 days, which you have the right to do, to make an appointment, the last day to make an appointment, again, under our current schedule, would be the February 28th council meeting. But again, if you're unable to make an appointment at that date, then we'd have to adopt the resolution to call the election, and then that would be in the November ballot of this year. So those are pretty much your options. I'll just make a couple quick points on miscellaneous issues that I get questioned on from time to time. First, can you vote? Could a council member vote on their own appointment to mayor? And my conclusion is that you could, based upon the language of the FPPC Regulation 18702.5 that allows you to vote for an appointment to a position on a body for which you're already on. So you're on the council. The mayoral position is part of the city council. So you have the authority under 18702.5 to vote on that, even though there's a marginal financial benefit to a potential council member who would get that appointment. The more difficult question is, what happens if a council member is appointed to the position of mayor? Obviously, that creates a vacancy in the council member position. Under Government Code Section 36512, you'd have the opportunity to fill that vacancy by appointment within a 60-day time period, or again, to call an election. So there's a little bit of complicating factors because we have established districts. They go into effect for Districts 1 and Districts 2 in 2018, for Districts 3 and Districts 4 in 2020. So if a council member whose seat is up in 2018 were to be appointed mayor, then that councilperson's seat would be declared vacant. The person who is appointed to fill that position would then serve until November of 2018 and then stand for election, and if he or she chose to do so, that would be a four-year term. The people in Districts, candidates for Districts 1 and 2 would have to be members of the district at the time the nomination papers are filed. If a person who is up for election, a council member in 2020, were to be appointed, then a successor, there'd be a vacancy in that council member's office. A successor could be appointed at an at-large basis, but then that person would stand for election in November of 18, and that election would be for a two-year term, which would be the balance of the original four-year term. So hopefully, that's straightforward enough, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on it.
Deputy Mayor Lowry, we have nine speakers on this item.
I just, one point of clarification. So if a 2020 council member is appointed to the mayor's position, we can appoint at-large to backfill that seat. That person could be at-large, but stand for election in 2018 at-large or by district?
By district.
No, for the 2018, it would remain. If it's a 2020 council member, then it would be at-large.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Zach, did you?
Yeah, I agree.
Want to jump in? Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that was correct.
Yes, two minutes?
Okay, so we have nine speakers. I'm going to call you two at a time. First, we have Erin Moran, followed by Robert Markley. We have two podiums. Feel free to line up both.
Erin Moran, followed by Robert Markley.
Hello, counsel and Deputy Mayor Chuck. Just wanted to let you know that my, this is really, okay. I think that we should have an election for the mayoral seat because it's a job. It's a step up. Our mayor, he served his term, his full term, I mean, he served, but then he was sick, and now he's resigned. I feel that an election should be the process. This is a job, and I feel that if you want that job, you should show us your resume. You should go out there and convince the people that you are qualified for this job. I feel that this is, this is like a promotion, and if you want that promotion, you have to work for that promotion. This is like another promotion in your job, and I feel that an election is valid, and we should have one. Thank you.
Robert Markley, 200 North Al Camino Real. Tonight, you have the choice of appointing a mayor or putting it on a ballot. If you appoint somebody, you may as well appoint Esther Sanchez. She's the longest-serving council member and would be sure to win an election anyway. So I suggest you save the city money and appoint Esther tonight. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Lisa Hamilton, followed by Randall Vanderreid.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, council members. Lisa Hamilton, 323 South Dittmar. I also want an election for mayor. I don't care whether it's in June or November, although I prefer November because it makes it a slightly cheaper election. But cost is not the point because Oceanside wastes a lot of money on a lot of things, and this is important. We did not vote, all the city did not necessarily vote for all the sitting council members. So why should they appoint a mayor? A decision which diminishes our vote. I ask you to protect the right to elect our mayor, our only representative who will be elected at large for the whole city by establishing an election for mayor either in June or November. Thank you.
Is Randall Vanderreid here? Randall Vanderreid? Okay, we'll move on to our next two speakers. So, thank you. Yeah, Randall, there you go.
Thank you very much for letting me have this time this evening. I want to start off with by thanking Mayor Woods for his years and years of service to our city. God bless him, and I hope he's doing well. I'd like to say that I would like to see you put it on the ballot as soon as possible because of the recent changes to the election of our council members. The fact that two of the people could be appointed for an extraordinary long period of time does not reflect the interests of the community at large. So I gratefully, or respectfully request that you put it on the ballot without hesitation and move on. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Jim Jenkins, followed by Dennis Sisneros.
Deputy Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity. Jim Jenkins, 1429 Cai Marbella. I'm the vice president of action, and I highly recommend and request that the citizens of Oceanside be given the right to vote and elect the next mayor that will best serve the community versus an appointed one that is out for their own personal interest and that of outside interest groups. I feel that the people deserve and request that these proceedings go to an election and let us, as the people of the city of Oceanside, make this choice and make the election. I have another question and comment or a concern, excuse me, regarding the appointment for a deputy mayor. I understand under the city code of ordinances 2.1.65 that this person was supposed to be elected in the first meeting of December, and that what happens there? I mean, we'd like to see the rotation of people being in there for deputy mayor to see what other candidates might be available. And I don't think it's right that one person continues to go on and on and on. So I'd like to see something be done about that as well. So thank you for the opportunity.
Sisneros, would you hold on just for a sec?
Yeah.
The city attorney.
So I was asked to respond to that last comment. We are going to be addressing other regional appointments on another item tonight, but the deputy mayor is appointed by the mayor with the ratification of the city council. That's what the code section provides.
Good to go? All right. My name is Dennis Sisneros. I'm just here to ask the council to choose to move to an election.
Dennis, you're a little tall, so you need to kind of put the mic up.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
When you're six- When you're six foot seven, you have those issues.
I'm just hoping the city council votes or has a good discussion in the next coming weeks and decides that moves to election, again, either during the June primary or the November general election. I think the citizens of Oceanside should get to choose their next mayor. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Arlene Hammerschmidt and Jimmy Knott.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council Members. Arlene Hammerschmidt, 2390 Ivy Road. First, I'd like to thank Council Member Kern for speaking distinctly and directly into the microphone. You are the only person who speaks on this dais that I can actually hear, so thank you very much. I'm a member of a currently forming grassroots Oceanside group. Our vision is Oceanside Governance You Can Trust. Yes, the residents of Oceanside currently have a bundle of trust issues with governance within the City of Oceanside, this body in particular. A part of our mission statement reads, "We advocate protection of every resident's right to an equal voice and impartial, transparent governance." Let me say that again. "We advocate protection of every resident's right to an equal voice and impartial, transparent governance." Holding an election for mayor is the best way for this body to restore some trust with residents by ensuring each of us an equal voice in this decision. Trust is worth spending some money on. A June election, I can't remember if it's the most cost-effective or not, but it would certainly be the quickest, and it would be done. I urge you to decide on an election so the people can elect the person to complete the nearly three years remaining on former Mayor Woods for your term. And Mayor Wood, thank you very much. Audience, if you are here tonight in support of an election, would you please stand up for a second and stretch your legs? Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor, Council Members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Cherry Lane. I don't know what the people here know, but Mayor Wood made a suggestion, a very appropriate suggestion. Mayor... Former Mayor Wood suggested that we take our city clerk and ask him to be our mayor. And I agree with him. That would be the most appropriate appointment to temporarily finish out his term. There are many reasons for this, including support from SouthO, concerns for the taxpayers due to the cost of election, and I could go on and on and on. This would also open the door, and I brought this here because I wanted people to have an idea on this, to explore changing our city ordinance, codes, and charter to add a fifth district and rotate the mayoral seat like many of our surrounding cities. This map here, if you went to all the hearings, was really manipulated. The public came out for five districts, not four, and it was repeated again and again and again, but it was not listened to because the council said they only wanted four districts to basically be heard and be considered. That's what the consultant said, and that's what they did, and that's the results. We needed five because the population demographics said so. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Diane Strater, followed by Sheila Kada.
Diane Strater, I'm from the East Side. I too think that we had an elected mayor, and he won by a great margin over all the other candidates. That indicates to you how valuable this city considers the mayor position. I too would like to see an election. I don't care whether it's June or November, but I think that we, the people... Get that? We, the people, should have a say in who our next mayor, temporary or otherwise, should be. I heard... We're already starting to politic, have you noticed? And I love Zach Beck. Esther Sanchez has been deputy mayor before, and if that's a qualification, then she should certainly be up there. I've got something about Council Member Lowry because he's been deputy mayor, that he should be in that position and appointed. Stop it. Give us our election. We'll decide who is best qualified to be mayor of this city, and I hope that we stop the politics in the meantime, and we just do what's best for Oceanside and its residents. Thank you.
I am for having an election because I think everybody should be able to voice their opinion. I would like to have it in June, and I would like to have a lot of debates be organized so that whoever's running for mayor, that they could have a few debates so people could come and see and then pick who they would like as mayor. And I would like... I don't know how to organize it, but I'd like to have, in this whole thing, elect somebody else for city council, too, and so we fill everything up. But I think people should have their voices heard, and people should determine who they want. That's why. And I think you all do a pretty good job, but I'm for voting on somebody. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Victor Roy, followed by Dana Corso.
Thanks for the opportunity. God bless Mayor Jim Wood. I'm really sad for his departure, and I hope he's doing a lot better. Victor Roy, I live in Rancho San Luis, right here in Oceanside. I'm a possible city council candidate for District 2 in the coming election this November. I move for an election of our next mayor. Let the citizens of Oceanside vote for their next mayor. Let democracy work as it should to provide fairness to everyone with an election. Oceanside voters elected Mayor Jim Wood overwhelmingly in successive elections. Who will the Oceanside voters elect next to lead and serve our beautiful city as mayor? I move for a mayoral election as soon as possible, be it June, be it November. Let there be an election.
Good evening, Council and staff. Happy New Year. I'm going to give this to you right now. Thank you. My name is Dana Corso, and I live in Jeffries Ranch, and I'm the President of Action, which stands for the Alliance of Citizens to Improve Oceanside Neighborhoods, representing 42 neighborhoods. On behalf of Action, I would first like to say thank you to Mayor Wood for all of his dedicated years of service to this community and to thank Pam and Debbie and the family for their dedication and devotion as well. We wish Mayor Wood a full recovery and all the best. As long as I have known him, he has always been a man of his word, and at the end of the day, that's all we have is integrity. So, tonight, we are here so that we can potentially, three council members can choose to appoint someone or call for an election. I have to say that I was quite taken back by a campaign mailer that was circulated by Mr. Lowry... Deputy Mayor Lowry. My first impression with the pot leaves and the propaganda... Wait, let's see. So, the people can see misleading propaganda. My first impression with the pot leaves and the logo of the city on the second page appears as though the city has endorsed Oceanside for a safer community. So, how does Oceanside and pot make a safer community? With all due respect to the supporters of marijuana, I have friends, colleagues, and family that have used marijuana for medical medicinal purposes, but on the other hand, we have a major epidemic in our state and this country with opioids and drug overdoses. My nephew, who was 23 years old, passed away on April 24, 2016, of a drug overdose. He told all of us in rehab... At the rehab, that he started using with marijuana. Yes, the voters decided, and now we need to figure out how to regulate pot so we can potentially prevent drug users and drug abusers. We certainly do not need to promote pot in the City of Oceanside. This mailer is disgusting and speaks volumes about your agenda, Mr. Lowry, and I think we all know why you don't want to run an election and wish to be appointed. If you... Excuse me. If you wish to talk about a safer Oceanside, let's talk about the Lilac Fire. You've got the pictures of the... Okay. Which, by the way, I'd like to... A big shout out to the firefighters, the police, and the cert members.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to keep it short. I'll wrap it up here real quick. Mr. Lowry, you promised in 2014 you would do whatever you could to reopen Jeffries Ranch Road for safety purposes. That never happened, nor did you make even an attempt.
Ms. Corso, I'm so sorry for your time.
As a matter of fact... Okay. Well, the bottom line is that I think that this city deserves an election. We need people that we can trust, people that have integrity, like Mayor Wood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Sylvia and Cindy Rocco.
Hi, my family and I, my husband and I, have been residents of the City of Oceanside for over 33 years, and we have been... We have elected you many times over, I suppose. What I want to say today is that you were elected, and I think the fair thing to do and the right thing to do, instead of appointing somebody and then, like you said, the one person loses a seat, and then you have the other person that takes over. When you're thinking too much and you're overthinking, that means that you're probably going to the incestuous part, and you're patting each other on the back. So, I believe the right thing to do is just let the voters decide. The voters voted for you. The voters deserve that. They're entitled to that. They deserve that. They're taxpayers, and they pay your salaries. You do the will of the people. That's what you were elected to do, and so therefore, I suggest that, given the long period of time, this is not a month, two months, three months that you would be filling the position in. This is to 2010, which means that it definitely is worth the cost when you have so many years, part three, almost the full election. So, therefore, I believe that the money will be well spent.
Hi, my name is Cindy Rocco. I move for a June election. I strongly believe the people deserve a council that best represents them, and right now, I'd like to formally announce my candidacy to be the next mayor of Oceanside, and I thank Mayor Wood for being such a great model. Some of my top goals are to protect and enhance our natural resources and capital assets. I'm seriously to be focused on job deficiency. We need more jobs, 41% versus more housing. I want to spearhead homelessness and focus on safety, and right now, there's an Oceanside for a safer community, and I fail to see how pot makes us a safer community. When we see 10 murders in 2017 and the fires, I see that a safer community is results from putting the tools in... The necessary tools in the hands of the police and the fire department. And most importantly, I want to protect our neighborhoods in the sense of not taking away parking, adding parks, because with all the development impacts, the neighborhoods are suffering, and pretty soon, it's going to become a quality of life issue. It's time to change the face of our ideas, ideas of career politicians. I will be competing against huge political troves, but I'm passionate to change the status quo and politics as usual. Please call me, get to know me, then support me and elect me. Please vote for me, Cindy Rocco, to be the people's mayor of Oceanside. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cindy Simmons.
My name is Cindy Simmons. I live at 451 Wilshire Road. We are actually part of the area that was impacted by the Lilac Fire, forced to evacuate twice. However, there's... And granted, there's... I do have issues with some of the members of our council. However, let's face it, people, all... Every single one of you have been elected by the voters of Oceanside. So, I'll probably get booed, but Chuck Lowry, who was appointed by the former mayor, Jim Wood, has been doing the jobs as deputy mayor. Let him do the job since the now mayor position is vacant to become the mayor, since that's what he's been doing. So, if we're going to have an election, then I would go for November, but let's face it, you all have been elected already by the membership, I mean, by the voters here in Oceanside, so let's just get the job done and actually start doing the job. That's all I have to say, and again, thank you.
No further public on this item.
No further public.
I'll go first. I mean, I appreciate everybody coming out, giving their input. This is the first night. We do have two timelines that we have to maybe adhere to, according to City Attorney as far as appointment or election. We haven't had an opportunity to talk to each other because of the Brown Act. I personally, to save money in favor of an appointment, you know, whether we can come to some conclusion of that, I do not know. Like I've told the press several times, you do not get this job without an ego. It comes with the DNA to actually run for elected office. So, you have probably four people up here who feel they should be mayor. It would be very difficult to get three votes for one person, but I think we should at least attempt to go through the process. We don't need to make a decision tonight, but we can actually go through this. I think the city manager said this is agendized for the next council meeting, too, so we can revisit it at that time and figure out what we're going to do. I'm a real fiscal conservative. The idea of spending $100,000 or $200,000 for an election, I think it's better sent for services. So, the idea that we will come and make that decision here in the next... Well, we have to make that decision by February 7. So, anyway, that's kind of my opinion. I don't know all this to my colleagues, and maybe we'll see where we're going to go from there, but I think I do appreciate everybody's comments, and I really understand them. I mean, I really do appreciate what you've said. I'm just stating what my opinion is now, and it's just one opinion of four people up here. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. I first want to start off as well honoring Mayor Jim Wood, who not only served as a council member and then a mayor, but also served before that 31 years as an Oceanside police officer. So, altogether, Mayor Jim Wood has served the city for 46 years. Thank you, Jim. In all the history of the city, I believe that Jim was the most popular. He took the office of mayor and made it personal, and I know it was a huge, huge, very difficult decision for him to have stepped down. He asked us to consider two people. He did suggest to us that we at least try to come up with an appointment. Jim and I worked together the entire time since getting elected. In fact, I... We worked together to get him elected in the first place. He came very strongly recommended by Melba Bishop, who also worked very, very hard for the City of Oceanside. Mayor Jim Wood recommended... Mayor Jim Wood recommended Zack Beck, and I like Zack Beck. I admire Zack Beck very, very much. He is probably the only person that I would consider appointing to the position, because I believe that he does care about the entire city and not just parts of it, and he does care about our neighborhoods. But this, I hear you, I've been, I've had a lot of conversations with people, that this is a very, very important, this is the leadership of the city, the third largest in the county. So if there is not acceptance of, at least, if we do not appoint Zack, then I agree, we ought to have an election. This is such a critical, critical position, especially now that, with the changes on Sandag. So, thank you very much for coming, and hopefully we'll resolve this in the best interests of the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller.
Thank you. I just would like to say that, you know, we've had some emails for appointment, some for election, and probably even some that said burn down the house, but we are, we're faced with something that's happened before, except it hasn't happened for the mayor's position. So this is a long term to decide. I think we need more than tonight to decide it. I think if we can go forward for, I mean, we have at least four weeks we can mull it over. If, I haven't heard from a lot of people that said they want to run for mayor, want to be appointed for mayor. So I think if we could ask in some sort of press release or something that the city could do is, you know, just applications to come into the city clerk's office to possibly be appointed, not necessarily meaning that we would have, you know, give them like a two-week timeframe and have, or what's their next meeting, is it two weeks?
Yes.
So that we could have opportunity to be introduced to some people that may or may not want to do the job. But I think that, you know, I'm not willing to do anything tonight other than to entertain what we've heard from the audience, as well as what may come to us in email or application type. You know, there's got to be a way to find out if there is somebody interested that is worthy to be appointed. It's not fair to not try the appointment, so if we can, to save the money. But it would have to be something that we're, the four of us would agree to, so. So that's all I have for tonight.
Seeing no further comments, we have no motion on the floor? Nothing to do but wait for the clock to run?
Well, John, do you have any thoughts on the question?
Well, I think if we could do some sort of release through the city itself and see if we could come up with some sort of wording to say if you have interest, if there's a suggestions, more suggestions as to whether to have an election besides the 14 or so that said they wanted that tonight. You know, I would like to hear from more people about whether to have an election or not. I mean, it wasn't overwhelming that we appoint, but it's also, we've received a lot of emails that said appoint. So at this point, that's, I don't know if you need a motion for something like that.
Well, let me just interject here. I'm not entirely sure what you would like to see happen between now and July 24th. One thing we definitely can do is put the exact same item that we just had on the agenda on the 24th. We'll take out the stuff about a potential appointment on today's date.
January.
January, I'm sorry, I misspoke. But we could put these, otherwise the same item that we just had on the agenda the 24th. I'm a little unclear what you're expecting of the city clerk or our staff between now and then.
I'm just expecting to have some way for people to understand this is the process we're going through, because everybody wants to know out on the street, but nobody's saying their opinions on how it should go, except for the few we've received.
So when we had the vacancy in the office of the city treasurer, which is our most recent example, we actually set up, I believe, an application. And so we could follow that same path, if you'd like, and then present those to you on the 24th, and then get your direction then. Is that something that you'd like to see happen?
If we could, is that the 24th? So they'd have to do it relatively quickly.
Right, we're under a pretty constrained time period, especially if you want to get this on the June ballot. We basically only have two more meetings.
Right.
So if you want it to go to November, if you're unable, then we could, we'd have a little bit more time. But basically, it'd only be one more meeting, frankly. So the whole process is pretty constrained. So if you want solicit input from the public about interested candidates, I'm not sure I see any other way to do it than to have a similar application process that we had for the treasurer's office, and we could present those to you in open session on the 24th.
Yes, I think if that's okay, we could, you know, you have seven days to, what, seven days to accomplish, seven, 10 days by Friday of next week?
I mean, I think the clerk and I could probably put something together and make it available on the city's website, if that's the direction of a majority of the council.
And I would also like to see, not just applications, but if they actually want the election as well. Input, so if the clerk could take that information.
Mr. Clerk.
One aspect we do have on the city's website is the Agenda Item Position Slip, where members of the public can comment on particular items in favor or opposed. So if this item's on the agenda in the next council meeting, then members of the public could comment on that portal and express that they prefer an election.
So how are they made aware?
Of the Agenda Item Position Slip.
That this is happening?
I think probably the best way to make the public aware would be through a press release, to be able to inform them that they can go onto the city's website and utilize that platform.
And we could make it available front and center on the city's website, make it clear that we're interested in soliciting input from the public, have a link to your email, and then a link to an application.
Thank you.
But again, we're going to be under a very short time period, so.
So it, I mean, I would imagine we could have the information by the 10th, or, no, I'm sorry. The next meeting's the 24th.
Yeah.
The Friday before, like, 10 days from now?
Yes.
Okay.
I kind of like this open discussion. So I'm just going to ask, so on the 24th, we would conduct interviews for mayor?
I don't think, I don't, I think maybe they, well, I guess.
Well, I mean, because of time constraints, basically, so if we, in the next two weeks, we ask for applications. We have an interview process, just like the treasurer on the 24th.
And they can come down and speak on the.
And anybody that wants to be mayor can apply. So council members who wish to be a mayor have to put in an application, so we can hear that. It will not be me. The idea that, and then, we have an interview process, and at the end, at the conclusion of that night, if we can't come to some decision, then our decision's made, that we can't.
Then we don't need the interview process. What we need is the information. If there is somebody interested, I would sure like to know about it. So if it's a press release, that's all we need. And then the press release.
But at what point in time would you make a decision? Would that be?
Well, you might make it on the 24th.
Well, if we're going to do that process, whoever applies needs to stand at that dais and tell the people why they feel they should be mayor. Just like Dr. Tricky did, when he got up there and said, gave his resume and talked about why he should be treasurer, and, Rafe, correct me, there was like six or seven, eight people? I mean, there was quite a few.
Twelve.
Twelve, okay, 12 people. So I think if we're going to do this, an appointment, it's going to be as open as possible, so people know what, who that would be. And if we can't come to some conclusion on that night, or at least say, okay, we're going to take it, we got everybody's information, we heard everybody's interviews, then on February 7th, we, somebody makes a motion and see if there's support for any of those candidates, and then if we can't make that.
I think you can say, if, in the press release, if you are interested in the appointment, come down and make your case in two minutes on the 24th.
Yeah.
And if you're not interested, if we, I mean, if we don't have anybody, then it's certainly going to go to an election.
Well, I think we'll have somebody. So, I'm sorry that we're going through this, but since, because of the Brown Act, you know, we haven't had a chance to talk about this upstairs. So this is part of that transparent, open discussion, you know, actually get a chance to ask our colleagues, what are your thinking on this process is? It is an unusual process because of the mayor's resignation. So I just wanted to make sure that we, the public understands what we're going through and how to do this as open as possible.
Well, we don't have to make any decision on the 24th.
Okay, but do you want to do interviews on the 24th, so people?
I don't want to do interviews. If they want to do their, I don't think, I think I'm, I'm not coming across clearly. I just want to know whether they want to appoint or not, and if they are interested, we can call them individually.
Yes, sir, don't wait to jump, you know, for a call. Go ahead and jump in anytime you're ready. I mean, I just want an open discussion.
No, what I'm hearing Councilmember Feller say is that he'd like something of the nature of a survey as to whether the public, the voters of Oceanside, would like to see an election or an appointment, and if anybody's interested in being considered, that they should attend the meeting on the 24th.
It's really, as simple as that.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing him say. So no interviews, I mean, I don't think we've ever done interviews during a council meeting. That would be pretty interesting, and a long meeting, too.
But. Well, it doesn't mean we can't have a special meeting in between.
Well, we could, but that's not what I'm hearing you say. What I'm hearing you say is that you would like to, anybody's interested to come.
It's probably going to be an election, but I don't think, I'm ready to say, I think this is the right person tonight, so.
So clerk, you're absolutely clear what's going on here?
Yes, I'm taking copious notes. As far as my, the one clarification I want to make sure is that this, as I understand it currently, this is going to be different than the process we utilized for appointing the treasurer.
Correct.
This is more of an informal process where members of the public are invited.
Informal and informational, in terms of getting the, some, the nature of a survey, asking the public whether they would like to see an election for almost three years left on the term for mayor.
Okay, I know it's confusing, because I'm confused about where we're going on this one, but I think we'll go forward. We have two more opportunities. The 7th is basically, and I don't want to use this inappropriately, but the drop dead date for the June election is the 7th. If we don't make any decision and we push it past that time, according to city attorney, we have until the 28th of February, and that is the absolute drop dead date for a, and the election will be in November. Am I got that correct?
Correct. The only thing I would add in is, I think somebody mentioned before, you could call a special meeting if you wanted some additional opportunities to debate this, so.
But we can't, we have to make some decision before the 7th if we want to make it by June.
Yes, your deadlines are the 7th for June, the 28th for November, basically.
Fine. Like I said, this is, you know, democracy's a messy process. So I think it's going to be a little bit messy here for the next couple of months, but we'll get through it. And so I, you know, so I, my personal opinion, if you're interested in being mayor, I would send your resumes to the council members and let them kind of vet it themselves, and then we'll figure out where we're going from there, whether we have an election or an appointment. So, thank you. I probably didn't add anything to clarity here, but at least we got it out in the open.
So I have a question for the city attorney about the regulations that you went over for a minute and a half, and there, those are in-place regulations, that's not something that the council made up this morning or something like that?
No, this is state law, so it's the government.
It details what our options are.
Correct, it's government, it's the Government Code, Section 34902.
And what does that say we have as far as our options?
So again, it says, quote, "In the case of a vacancy in the office of the mayor for any reason, the council shall fill the vacancy by appointment. If the council fails to fill it within 60 days, it shall call an election to fill the vacancy to be held on the next established election date to be held not less than 114 days thereafter. A person appointed or elected to fill a vacancy shall hold office for the unexpired term of the former incumbent." That's for the mayor. I referenced another section dealing with the appointment of a council member vacancy, which is different. This is for the mayor's process.
Okay, thank you.
Staff, we all have clear direction?
Oh, staff will figure it out? Okay, so if we don't decide by the, at the next meeting, then the election will go to November?
No. That's incorrect. It's the February 7th meeting.
If we decide on the February 7th meeting, the election can be in June?
If you decide on the January 24th council meeting to not appoint, and you wish to go to an election, then it would be consolidated with the June 5th primary. But you'd have until February 7th.
We could adopt those resolutions, calling the election on February 7th. That's the last date you could do it.
We could call an election on February 7th for November. We can do it for either date.
No, you'd have to do it for June. If you do it on February 7th, it has to be for June. If you go past that date on February 28th, then you call an election, it has to be in November.
So I would suggest, if we get to February 7th, the city attorney has the resolution drafted for the June ballot, but we don't have to. The idea that if we say, okay, we're close, we may get an appointment, we can kick it back the 7th, but by the 28th, we'll have to make a decision.
Okay. We can have those resolutions at each of your meetings, so that you can make the decision if you want to do that, so you'll have the option.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item. 21.
Item number 21 is a request by Deputy Mayor Lowry and Councilmember Kern to make recommendations to regional boards and commissions and City Harbor CDC Advisory Group liaison positions.
So, are you going to present?
You know, I just want to point out that this, what we're doing now is, what we couldn't do during the time the mayor was the mayor. Until he resigned or retired, we could not appoint anybody to do anything, because that's the law. The mayor makes the appointments, the council approves the appointments. So what we're doing this evening is going to be going through the recommendations for regional boards and commissions and the other commissions that the city council has to staff liaison with.
Okay. So is there any public on this?
There are no public speakers for this particular item.
Councilmember Kern, you're the first speaker.
Well, I just want to make a motion, everybody, all the council members have the list that was put out. I've just got to make a motion for adoption and see if we get a second, see if we vote on it.
I'll second that. Second.
Second, so, any other lights?
No lights.
Let's vote.
Let's vote.
Motion approved for zero.
Okay, item number 22.
Yes, city attorney.
Thank you. Item 22 is the adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Chapter 29 of the Oceanside City Code by the amendment of Sections 29.116, 29.122, 29.124, 29.125, and 29.126 pertaining to the regulation. 29.122, 29.124, 29.125, and 29.126 pertaining to the regulation of commercial kitchen grease disposal.
No public.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Move adoption?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Item number 19.
Yes, item number 19. We have nine speakers on this item.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. So I'm going to call you two at a time. First, we have Nancy Seblet, followed by Michael Kobos.
My name's Nancy Seblet. I live at 1520 Gold Rush Way in Oceanside. I'm the co-chairperson of the Oceanside League of Women Voters Unit. And hearing your discussion about how to vet these candidates, if there's anything that the league can do to help you all, we have a lot of experience in this area. (APPLAUSE). Oh, thank you. On, the league, a lot of members of the league have been doing investigation into the homeless situation here in San Diego. And on January 27th, we're sponsoring the, the showing of a film called Tony the Movie, which was filmed here in San Diego about the homeless situation. And the director and the gentleman who is homeless, Tony Rodriguez, will be at the, at the showing and available for questions. We've collected a lot of information that, as, as everyone in the city and county has, and we're going to share some of that about the statistics of homelessness in Oceanside. And we invite all of you and members of the public. We're going to start, the doors will open at 12:45. And the room only seats 160, so if you're interested, please come early. Thank you very much. I may come back on the 24th to make this announcement, and so forgive me for being redundant, but I'll arrive early and hopefully be able to speak very briefly before the rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Is there a website that has that listed on it that we could actually look at?
The league of, yes, Tony the Movie has its own website and has a trailer. And the League of Women Voters website, which you can find, will have the, the same trailer.
And it has details for the location? I guess it's going to be in the community rooms down here?
It is, at the library. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
And what's the date again?
January 27th. It's Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah, look forward to seeing you.
And what time was it?
One o'clock.
Okay.
But get there at 12:45. So, well, should I reserve a seat for you? I'd be happy to do that.
No.
Okay.
But I'm going to put it on my calendar.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
We'll be there.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the time. Clearly, you have a lot on your plate. Couple thoughts here. We are in a bit of a transition area. New Year, clearly changes in this office, this, this building. One of the things that is going on in, in our neck of the woods, that's, you're all aware about, I'm not going to go into that. But there was a time when the Fallbrook, Southmore Hills, Bonzel area was thought of as the bit of avocado capital. We had citrus out there, we had lots of stuff growing, it's great. But times have changed, a lot of different things, water prices, NAFTA, a bunch of stuff. So, so we're changing, and that does happen. I currently have a vineyard growing. I did some research naturally before I dropped them in the ground. I'm right across the street from Beach House Winery. I think some of you are aware of that, might have visited there. Had the, the ground tested, and it was for amendments, zero amendments. We have quality soil in that area. And so it's, I've attended every public scoping meeting, the, all the agro tourism, council workshops that you've supported, that you've provided, and, and this is where I've ended up. And just to share with you, I talk with people every week, people who may be voting for one of you, and they are confused. They don't know what's going on. And the instructions given by the city attorney tonight and what's going on now gives me nothing more to, to let them know what's going on in this office. They, you know, a lot of them were unaware that Mayor Wood was gone. They heard he was back, and now he's gone. So I just want you to, to give further thought when this comes down the line, when we have further discussions about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Cliff Ireland and Randall Vander, Vanderreid.
Can you guys hear me? I'm pretty tall, I might need to raise the mic. Good evening, deputy mayor, city council, city attorney, city treasurer, city clerk, city staff, Jimmy Naught, 127 Cherry Lane. City manager, my mistake. My name is Cliff Ireland, and I'm a San Marcos resident. I'm here for a couple of reasons today. The first is, yesterday was National Law Enforcement Day, so I want to make sure we give a little kudos to our law enforcement. They do a great job, and I really, really appreciate them, even though I don't act like it. Second thing, I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Deb, who sat over there for many years reading Proclamations and blah, blah, blah. She did a great job for Mayor Wood, she did a great job for the city, and I really appreciate that. And as far as I know, today was her last day, too, and I wish I, you know, could have, could have seen her because I actually wasn't here. The biggest reason why I'm here today is actually North County Veterans Stand Down. It's pretty basic. I've been going around for the last couple of weeks, couple, a couple of weeks, speaking of different organizations, groups, about homeless veterans. North County Stand Down, it's, it is what it says up there. It's a four-day veteran stand down that takes place in Vista, California. They're Vista. And we are looking for volunteers to sponsor, find homeless veterans, bring them there, help us get them off the streets, help us get them services that they might not normally know they can get. They're too lazy to get, I hate to say it, or they don't know how to get. It's, it's, let's just be honest, homeless is, is a crappy subject to talk about. It's there, we want to hide, we want to run. Everybody says something different about it, but these are veterans. They're, homeless aren't important, but these are veterans. You know, they sign their name on a dotted line when most of us in this room didn't. They gave up something, they gave up their life, even though they're still alive, but they could have given up their life or something, and we're just asking for a little help in return. So, thank you.
Ah, good evening, I'm back. My name is Randall Vanderreid. I live at 331 Blue Springs Lane here in Oceanside, beautiful city. And I'd like to start out with, by asking you all a question. Does anybody here, show your hands, think that we are not going to have another drought? We are not going to have another drought? Show your hands. So I have one person that says we're not going to have another drought. Okay, let me, if we are going to have another drought, please raise your hands. Okay? All right. The fiscal conservatives don't think we have another drought coming. Anyway, I'd like to point out, when I was in grade school, living in San Francisco or the Bay Area, I was acutely aware of the water shortage here in Southern California. Now, I find that this fountain that we have out here to be a monument to arrogance. To think that you in Southern California are never going to have water issues, and then in the face of a drought, double down and revamp the whole thing to do it all over again, seems to me to be a little bit detached from reality. I'm going to put this here on the table. There you go. That's Zadar, Croatia. And that is my solution to your problem with this fountain out here. Something that would not only contribute to the community long-term, make it a destination, something to see. Now, if you go on, go to Zadar, Croatia, you'll find a disc there. I'm going to go over time, so don't worry about the light. You're going to find a disc there, and it's about 20 meters in diameter. And what it is, it is solar panels. And what it does is during the day, it sucks up all this energy, and it's got a meter there showing you how much energy it soaks up. And at night, it turns into a light show. And it's marvelous. You can dance on it, run across it, walk across it, do whatever you want on it, and it reacts to the people that are on the disc.
Thank you.
A fabulous thing.
Thank you.
This would be so much more efficient and so much more...
Can you make the light blink?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Vanderreid, your, your time is actually up.
Yeah, I understand that, and I told you I was going to go over.
I know, but...
And other people went over.
Yeah.
So, I, I'll, I'll wrap it up.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Please, I'll be happy to talk to anybody about this. That's the name of the town. Just put it in on your Google search.
Thank you.
Solar lights, Zatar or solar lights, and it'll come up, Zatar, Croatia.
Thank you.
And look at that for future projects. These things do take time to plan.
Thank you.
That's why I'm bringing it up now.
We got the name.
Mr. Vanderreid, thank you, sir.
Okay? Again, I went over.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you, folks, very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'll come back next week and take another three minutes.
That'll be fine.
Our next two speakers are Erin Moran and Jeremy Hutman.
Perfect. Beautiful. Hi, I'm Erin Moran. I live at 1241 Chamboard Court, and I also run a avocado business out in Southmore Hills. I am bringing you this attention because our neighborhood was literally affected by the wildfires. It was literally two miles away, and one of my neighbor's horse barns burned up in the fire. And, and I would like to thank the county for doing everything that they did. I think their plan was executed very well. We had the military, I want to thank them. I want to thank the fire departments that came together and combated this and to evacuate us safely. Our police department, our volunteers that were there to help us through the night when we, when we needed shelter. The thing is, is that Intergal decided to plan a meeting right after the fires, and this is a good thing, because Intergal got an earful that night. From, from the planning, from the planning to everything, because we, Southmore Hills needs an evacuation plan. They do, seriously. And not only that, this should be a wake-up call for, for us as a community and as a city, because fires are going to be an everyday routine every year. And if Bonzel goes up, Fallbrook goes up, Vandergriff becomes a two-hour block. Two and a half hours? Three and a half hour block that night. So we got a traffic problem, we need to really seriously look at a plan, we got to work with the county on, on how to evacuate, to make it much smarter evacuation times, like earlier, before, when the wind's blowing and the fire's going, we should be like chugging out, quick.
Thanks, Erin.
And so anyways, I just wanted to let you know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable deputy mayor, city councilmembers. My name is Jeremy Hutman. I'm with the California First Property Assess Clean Energy, or PACE Financing Program. I'm here actually to bring some good news for you tonight and, and share some updates on the PACE program. We provide financing for your homeowners and business owners to improve their properties to, to install energy and water-saving measures. You all joined the California First program actually back in 2010. We launched in 2014, and since that time, we have, we've helped over 100 property owners install over $2.5 million worth of upgrades. They're going to help them save money on their utility bills, make their homes healthier and more comfortable. There have been two pieces of PACE legislation that just passed in 2017 that just went into effect, and I wanted to share information on them with you today. One is SB 242, and the other is AB 1284. SB 242 expands consumer protection, so it's making what's already the most popular and successful energy financing program in the history of the state even better. Your, your property owners now, before they sign up for PACE, were required to have a recorded phone call with them to go over all of the terms of the, the financing that they're doing. So they really understand the, the financing, and they make sure that it's, it's the right financing program for them to improve their properties. And the next is AB 1284, which creates regulation under the Department of Business Oversight, which is the state regulator that oversees all lending in the state, all banks, all credit unions, mortgage lenders. They now oversee PACE financing as well. So this, this really great program that's helped over 150,000 property owners in the state has now gotten better and has more oversight and more consumer protections that are going to benefit your constituents. Thank you very much. If you all have any ongoing questions about PACE or the California First program, I am available to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So these handouts, does the handout have your contact, the city has your contact information?
They don't, I'll, I'll share it with the staff that I've been working with.
That's great. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Katie Popinyak, followed by Kelly McCormick.
Get this down from the six-foot-seven guy here. Good evening, and thank you for listening. We're sorry to be the end here. My career in this city has been helping high-risk youth, and I've had many great agencies to work with, such as Interfaith. I've worked in all the schools. A lot of these youth have been in foster care because their parents have had a drug or alcohol issue, and I have worked the other side with adults in sober living programs. These are vulnerable people, and I believe from these experiences that marijuana should not be used by them, and especially by people with mental health issues. It's a scary combination. Pot is especially very strong these days. The THC level, levels are much stronger than they used to be, and I believe it could be more of a cause to psychosis than a cure or a medicine. I sat here during the elaborate PowerPoint presentation and read the ad hoc committee report about the State of California Track and Trace Program. And I just want to let you know, if you don't know, it was from seed to storefront. That program is going, is so far not up and running, and this is a lot of the problem with a lot of what's happening with regulations with marijuana in our state. Right now, the program's not in place, there's no software being used, and so the people in the storefronts are having to use pen and pencil, being asked to document pot sales manually using paper invoices and shipping manifests. The fear here is that, again, we're going to have illicit or unsafe marijuana products out there, and that's frightening to me. California's taking a very long time to figure out their processes, and I just wonder why Oceanside's in such a hurry and who's pushing you to be in a hurry. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Kelly McCormick, and I'm also going to be speaking about marijuana regulations, and I'm going to be using the words of other people tonight. And one of the things you talk about is putting the focus here on medicinal marijuana, but that's a really big umbrella that is often misused. These words are not mine, they come from an article in Rolling Stone, which is certainly no conservative publication. This is by Amanda Lewis, and she's writing about getting medical marijuana. And she says, "Pot heads and sick folks alike could plunk down as little as $30 in exchange for a five-minute meeting with a dubiously accredited physician who gives you a quick once-over before reflexively signing a document attesting to your medical need for marijuana." Parentheses, "Shout..." Parenthesis, "Shout out to the consummate professional who reviewed my paperwork last year and saw that I had listed menstrual cramps as my reason for wanting cannabis." Okay, and moving on. Prop 54, as we've mentioned many times before, was a vote for decriminalization. That's not the same as a vote for commercialization. And from former Representative Patrick Kennedy, Democrat from Rhode Island, he wrote in The Hill that "No one wants to arrest and imprison seriously ill people. Everyone is in favor of responsible research to find new medicines that will help those who are suffering." But let's also be honest about what's really happening. Companies that are selling high potency marijuana gummy bears and lollipops are not interested in medicine. They're interested in marketing kid-friendly products to hook the next generation of lifelong customers. Studies demonstrate a clear link between a higher prevalence of marijuana use among youth and density of registered marijuana growers and adult users. Youth are more likely to try new methods of marijuana use, such as edibles or vaping. Pot shops are also linked to higher levels of property crime in nearby areas. These shops also tend to locate in disadvantaged minority neighborhoods where residents are less likely to be able to fight back. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Bob Knutia.
Hello, Council, my name's Bob Nutella.
Nutella.
Sorry about that.
Like to spread.
There's a K in front of it.
The K is silent.
My apologies.
There's a K in your name.
There's a K in front, so. So I'm, I'm speaking about the December 20th vote for, for pro-cannabis, and there are a couple of issues that were brought up that I, first of all, I do have a, a legal permit here in, in Oceanside. I'm one of the few, however, I do not operate in Oceanside because I cannot logistically make it work legally, because I have to go to the dispensary, deliver, back to the dispensary, and back. But, but hopefully we'll resolve that. But I wanted to talk about the security issue and the teen issue. I think with today's regulations, and, and I'm very disappointed with the lines at the dispensaries and things of that nature. That's not where medical cannabis is supposed to go. You know, there, there are definitely other options. The kids now paying a 27% tax, it's really going to drive them to the, to the black market, unfortunately. And that's where we really need to be, be safe. The seniors are the ones that are going to be suffering the most with the 22% tax. You know, I have a patient base, I have a legal business, Interanture Mirage, that I operate. My average age patient is 70, right? They do everything sublinguely, none of them smoke unless they're a cancer patient. So there are ways to do it. Now, one of the things that was brought up was, you know, how can you tell if they have a recommendation from a real physician? The recommendation from the state, they have a, a document that a physician can sign that can go along with the recommendation that will provide additional benefit or additional, like, patient, you know, marking, I guess, anyway. But anyway, the Type 9 license that the state has put out, which is a dispensary, no storefront, provides safety and security, and you can have, I would think, because they have it in Desert Hot Springs, the, in the space, they have a camera right to the police station. So there's ways to get security, and there's ways to, to have a non-storefront dispensary delivery to seniors, medical only. And that's what I would promote.
Thank you. But keep those, you sent us an email this week also, correct? Yeah. So we do get those. Thank you. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lowry, there's no more public on this item, and prior to adjournment, I would want to make a formal request. Earlier this week, former Councilmember Sherry Mackin's husband, Brooks Mackin, passed away, and I just want to ask if we could have a moment of silence for him before we adjourn.
Great.
Thank you.
Want to do that right now?
That would be great. If you could all please stand for a moment of silence for Brooks Mackin. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes. Were, are council comments? I forgot.
I just want to say, add on, because I was going to bring that up. Sherry Mackin is a former councilwoman for the city of Oceanside. I, I was, I feel fortunate to have gotten the call and to be able to have gone over to her home on the night that it happened. Brooks Mackin was a wonderful person, a very loving husband, very loving dad. The family is together, they, I'm sure are going to need our friendship, our love, our good thoughts and prayers. So the Mackins have lived in Oceanside for many years, you all know where she lives. She's a very proud SouthO resident, and of course, as I said, she was a council member, longtime teacher, Oceanside Unified School District. So our hearts go out to the Mackin family. Thank you.
So we are adjourning the meeting to Wednesday, two weeks from today. January 24th at 3:30 is the closed session meeting, and at 5:00 PM is the start of the real heavy-duty stuff. So we will see you in two weeks. Thank you.